How's that sound?
You got it.
It's on this computer, though. It's not on YouTube. We'll put it on YouTube later.
Yeah, I think you can upload it later, probably.
There you go.
Um, just for the sake of closing that loop, does someone want to ask Mallory or whoever manages the county Facebook account just to post the Zoom information? So if people want to join in and listen, they can. I don't think that needs to stall us, but.
Yeah, I can do that.
I don't know if. I mean, I, I, let's ask her if this has any issue as far as the transparency requirements of meetings if we're not streaming, given that we're on Zoom. I just would hate to start down the path and then find that we weren't.
Okay, I'm emailing her right now.
I would think that's okay. I would, you know, we're gonna be posting this right away on, on YouTube tomorrow anyway. Oh, you're saying can people view this on YouTube while it's streaming?
I, I, because of public meetings, I don't, I don't know if it's required or not.
Yeah.
And it, I mean, it's, it's your discussion, John, from a staff's perspective.
Yeah, I don't think, I think we could just perceive where it is. We'll post it later.
So with that, it is 4:20 and I will call this meeting to the planning, of the planning commission to order. Here in person, we have Rick York with our Commissioner Representative Patricia Dean, Steve Evers, Emily Campbell, Josie Kovach, and Tony Mancuso, along with county planning staff. So on today's agenda, other than our sort of standard action item of approving minutes, we have a workshop, but we do not have a public hearing. So I just want to make it clear that if you are here to make a comment for anything that's on the agenda, I am going to ask you to make your comments during the Citizens to Be Heard segment. So with that, I will open up our first Citizens to Be Heard of the meeting, and if you would like to make a comment, if you could please post into the chat that you'd like to speak, and I will welcome you to come off mute. Okay. Seeing nobody chatting, I'll just take a moment. If you are unable to chat, you can come off mute now. Otherwise, we will move forward into the rest of our agenda. Okay, so we will move on to expertise communications and disclosures. We have no actions other than standard administrative on the agenda, but does anybody have any disclosures to, for the sake of safety, contribute? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes from August 23rd. There's any comments? Feel free to speak. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from August 23rd, 2021.
Okay, is there a second? Rick, Josie, are we all able to hear us? Okay, seconded by Josie. So motion by Steve, seconded by Josie. Any discussion? Okay, with that, I'll call the votes. All in favor of adopting our minutes, raise your hand or say aye. To your Tony, I can't see you, so hopefully you can come off of mute. There you are. Okay, and is Rick still with you, Tricia? See you, yes?
He votes yes, yes.
Okay, five in favor, none against. That is unanimous adoption of our meeting minutes. So we will move on to our first discussion item, which is our county commission update from Commissioner.
Great. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
If not, it's because I'm in the county commission chambers and the wife, there's, it's bad. So, okay. So I'm going to go over just some things that happened at our September 7th meeting. And things that I think that are pertinent to you. One, and I think this is really exciting and interesting. And we, Chris Baer discussed working with the Moab Area Land Trust, obtaining funding for other projects. He noted budget meetings were to begin on that. And the other thing that Chris stated was that we do have a new economic development director. I'm sure you know that Elaine Gisler resigned and moved on to San Juan County. So we have August Granath in his place and he seems, you know, seems ready to go. He's already made contacts with all of us and is meeting with all of us individually. So one of the things that was not really obviously pertinent to planning and zoning, but I just think residents in general, that there was a letter that we supported for mandatory face coverings at Grand County School District for the next 30 days as far as K through 12. As you probably know, there was quite a bump at the high school, and so they instituted that and that passed unanimously. And we did, we, my brain is not being able to set. Anyways, there was a motion to be made to approve. So the county actually provided a budget for the Moab Area Community Land Trust for a year to hire an executive director. And there was a discussion around that. Part of that discussion came from me, and the budget was $97,000. And so I had some concerns that taxpayers were going to bear the burden of that. And my worry was that as a nonprofit, was that going to be sustainable? Like, we give them the money to do that and they couldn't sustain themselves, but it was made really clear by Audrey Gam that that was not going to be the case, that that would allow them to get up on their feet and then be functioning wholeheartedly on their own. And so that did pass unanimously, and I thought that that was hopefully really significant. It's a really complex position that's been burdened, been on the backs of a bunch of volunteers and they've done a ton of work. And so it's great that now you'll have an exec, executive director that can handle that. And there was a unanimous decision to approve the purchase agreement on online public engagement platform through planning and zoning. And so John can speak to that more, but it was made really clear by Kevin Walker that I, my, again, my, my trepidation about that was like, can that be done in-house? And, and John made it clear that, yeah, you could do it in-house, but you're going to get what, or sorry, Kevin made that clear. You can do it in-house, but you're going to get what you pay for, not to, not to, you know, they're just not software designers that, you know, so that's what, what they, you know, they do. And so not to, you know, belittle the planning and zoning department, just saying they're not software designers. And there was, you guys passed a couple, made recommendations on the resolution for the Thane Minor Record Survey. And both of those passed unanimously. There didn't appear to be any issue with that. Once again, the, um, the ordinance for repealing or replacing Article 9 and amending Article 10 came to the table. And once again, that was tabled because we're, we're seeming to keep finding glitches in that, and I think that that's okay. You know, we want to make sure that eventually we pass an ordinance that is appropriate. There was a motion made to change the name of Johnston Peak Drive in Phase 1, Peak U subdivision to Johnston Place Avenue. There was some hesitancy around that, noting that, you know, we, there's kind of this overlap and, and would it be cumbersome to emergency services? And so that being said, that did pass, but there was some opposition to that. So that passed four to three. And I think that that is my, you know, my big takeaway from that meeting for you all. So there are questions, and if I can't answer them, hopefully John is around and can help me on that.
Well, as a software designer myself, I'm glad to know it's being handled with professional hands.
You, you will, you will appreciate Emily at a, at a part in that conversation, Kevin's like, oh, I do some software designing on the side, right? I didn't know that about him, but okay. And then later on in the discussion, I can't remember what Chrissy was talking about, but it was some pop star. And Kevin didn't have the slightest clue who it was. I actually didn't know who it was. And, you know, he was all, she was all offended that he didn't. And I said, he did state that he's a software designer. So, you know, I don't know if those skills overlap.
We all have our, our areas of expertise. That's fabulous. Well, we have use of that for the general planning process, John, is, what is the timeline to get that ramped up, do we think?
Yeah, by all means. That's one of our major goals is to make sure we can use it for the general plan land use code outreach. If we had it ready for the Flap Grant meeting tomorrow, I think we invited you to that, Emily, didn't we?
It's in the packet, yep.
Yeah, that would be ready too, but we're not ready for that. So hopefully we'll be doing a lot more of that and putting some platforms together. It takes a bit of preparation to make sure these things are working properly.
Yeah, I have a meeting with our, like, developer, I guess, who's going to be kind of tag teaming the whole thing with me on Wednesday to just kind of start setting up. So hopefully within the next, you know, few weeks, we'll have something to show of it. Yeah, that's the goal.
Any other questions of Commissioner Hadeen about the mission report?
And Neil, and Emily, I just want to state it, a couple of things that, these are just, you know, citizens talking to me. I've had a couple of people express concern that that Spanish Valley survey has kind of died off. So hopefully, again, I'm just going to, you know, make sure it doesn't die. I think we've put a lot of time and effort into that. And the other idea, which I thought was a great idea, and I'm not placing this on your backs, but was to have like a community brainstorming session on affordable housing. You know, it's obviously the largest concern out there. People, you know, we talk about it nonstop. Casey Mu talks about it nonstop, and maybe it's a great idea to just have the general public some kind of, you know, brain pop session, just an idea.
Well, let me actually punt those two to John or Elisa as we go through any action items remaining from staff, from the staff report. I know that we've talked about revisiting the survey, sort of nested under some of the priorities related to the general plan effort. And then I think just getting a general sense of how affordable housing is being prioritized across all this work would be great, but I think, Elisa, is this your?
No, let me jump in, let me jump there. So we, I thought we mentioned this last time, but maybe we did, because it's not in the minutes. Laura's been working on getting a trend-based community survey together that will wrap in a lot of what's in the Spanish Valley survey. So I thought we had talked about that, but maybe not. So that's, that's on the table. She's fairly far along on that. And maybe comparing notes with the city on how that's going. I think the goal in the housing one was actually, and it's a great idea, it's something like the city's done. I think that's what you're thinking, Trish. Trish, they did a bit of brainstorming, fairly heavy brainstorming session. I've heard some of the results of that. So we're hoping to do something similar to that after the OAO discussion tonight. We do have an HDH O email preparation that Elisa's worked pretty hard at getting a flow chart together. Those are crucial to any discussion, right, flow charts? So that would be one, and then we would have a housing discussion as part of that. So I was hoping to have the housing one first, but we've kind of flipped it the other way around. Cause OAO is one of the spot button issues, but we could certainly change that priority if you're interested.
I would say, and I'm sorry, what was the timing for those discussions specifically?
Well, we're hoping through the recommendation tonight, we would have something going to the county commission with a joint workshop, probably in early October on OAOs. You'd follow that with an HDH O discussion. And that timing is, in October is about the same time a lot of these plaids are expiring too, so it'll be, it'll be a good time. And then the housing one would be shortly thereafter. So I would like to make sure it was much more strategic than just throwing a brainstorming session together. And I know that's not what you meant, Trish, but I think throwing something together that's kind of thought through and maybe brings both commissions together in one way, or we do it with one commission, maybe with some input from you would be helpful.
Well, I think maybe we can wrap that general question into the discussion during our workshop today. I, I do think HDH O particularly stands out as sort of a unique egg in regards to this larger affordable housing conversation. It may be useful to have the county take a position on how to move forward there and understand what else is left on the table before going into a broader discussion, but I think we should, we should talk through that and make sure that staff has what they need to go back to the commission at the end of today's meeting. Right, lovely. Anything else in the staff, staff report, not specific to our discussion items?
You know, and I looked at the minutes, Emily, I thought there was something in there that you had requested, or somebody at the commission requested an update on the flooding. But I couldn't see it in the minutes. Do you remember that? Cause I actually had Bill Jackson and Bill Hall's flagged to do an update on that with the commission. But for some reason, it doesn't seem to be in the minutes. So maybe I just re, re-noted that wrong.
I will go back to my notes.
So they're doing an update to Arnie Hellquist's group on Wednesday.
Oh.
And, and so that's on the table, but I thought you had requested, somebody had requested that, but maybe I'm just.
I think I may have raised that actually during the general planning steering group session, if I recall, because it related to the stormwater management. Oh, no, because we were looking at the matrix last meeting.
That's what it was.
And one of the questions of priority was the stormwater management plan, and I just brought up that that was published or was adopted in 2011. Well, I don't know, I assume it was adopted in 2011. The date on it is 2011, and there were specific projects cited there that were not completed and that also maps to some broader questions just around resilience of.
That's right.
Time of change and so on, but I think just, just staying close to it and understanding sort of how the, how the county is addressing it and approaching it in line with all the other work is probably as much details as I was looking for at this point.
Okay, so nothing really present, presentation wise, maybe just an update from staff?
I think an update from staff would be helpful. I continue to press that I'm particularly interested at potential risk from climate impact. It affects economic diversification. It affects growth and development opportunities. And of course, you know, residential land values, and so it will remain one of my top priorities of just how are we approaching this in this larger planning effort, but I'll leave it to staff to figure out when and where and how to bring that to the table. Any other questions for staff from their action item and update? Right, well, I know that you all have a lot of balls in the air, and so I really appreciate this. Fantastic. Well, then we will move on to our discussion item, our second discussion item, which is a workshop on overnight accommodations overlay. Before I hand it back over to you, John, I just want to make a couple comments of just contextualizing this because I know that this is a topic that has been controversial at times and that there are also several members of the community that have, you know, specific interest in, in understanding the county's direction and position going forward. So some just sort of ground rules for this. I know that there are a number of people on this call and some are names that I recognize as maybe having an interest in this particular discussion. I am going to ask that we withhold public comment until we either return to our next Citizens to Be Heard comment, which will be at 5 o'clock. We'll open that up to make sure if anyone does have anything to contribute that they have an opportunity. Of course, you can also submit letters and if and how we move forward on this, there will be ample opportunity for citizen input. The second thing I just want to bring up is there's, there's a lot of different topics, even just in this outline here, and each carry different weight and different levels of controversy and even sort of different levels of community interest or concern based off of anecdotally what we've heard. So I just wanted just, for the sake of history, because we have a lot of new members on our, our body, just kind of restate how we got here and then just make sure that we have a clear set of objectives for this conversation that we want to answer or give staff to go forward. So this doesn't just sort of turn into a catchall of this huge absorbent topic, which could take us in all sorts of directions. So when we had the opportunity as a community to put in a moratorium on overnight accommodation development and look at the current state of those types of developments and against the larger vision and challenges facing our community, we adopted changes for new overnight accommodations and removed them as a use by rights in the underlying zone. So all of our underlying zones do not have these overnight accommodations as a use by right, but then we did apply overlay zones specific to the primary uses that we saw, which was RVs and campgrounds, the nightly rentals, and then hotels and motels. So this has been language that's caught up some of these conversations that we've had as a planning commission. So I just want to take the time to catch everybody up on kind of how to think through this. We have our underlying zones, and then we have our overlay zones, which were applied to the areas where we had density of these developments or specific hotels and motels that were already in place. We also have several developments that have vested rights, but are not currently built out or not even currently in some cases under construction. So anytime we're talking about the overnight accommodations compared to how many existing, you know, lodging units we have compared to how many homes and so on, we have to take into consideration both how many are built out, but also those vested rights. And so I, I just want to make sure that we don't lose that context as we discuss this against, you know, sort of the uncertainty of what that will actually manifest. And I'll just raise the last thing, which is we have had several members of the community over the last several years join us for various points in our meetings to talk about some of these particular issues that we're seeing in front of us. But by no means is this an opportunity to address those individual concerns. Any sort of combination around overnight accommodations that we create a recommendation on, you know, will be tied to some larger vision. So just because I know, I know that's been a topic of conversation as well amongst our citizenship of, you know, which are we choosing before and on, which not? It all is targeted at broader vision, broader county priority. So excuse me for opining for a bit, but I just wanted to set that context because I do think it's important. With that.
Can I ask a question there?
Yes.
So one of the questions I would ask is, and maybe this is a roundtable preliminary, is how we got to where we are. Tony would probably not have that, maybe he does have that background. Because I would be more well-informed if I knew this. This has been going on for two years with the moratorium, roughly a moratorium, because it's actually scrubbed a whole bunch of things. It's scrubbed the dude ranch, it's scrubbed the bed and breakfast, it's scrubbed camping. Intuitively, it seems strange to have those taken off the list. And I realized it wasn't just planning commission doing that. So that would be one question historically, how we got to where we are. The other one is around what the commission would prefer to see going forward. So I would, I would hope that the recommendation is more focused on something that the planning, the county commission can actually dig into. If it does direct us to do more research, fair enough. And there's a written number of things, I mean, Elisa wants to address this as far as ratios are concerned and what those numbers look like. Because getting good data is really important too. So I think that's, there's some priorities here. Intuitively, I think there's, there's some direction that the commission, planning commission wants to go. But it would be very helpful if it was a recommendation that came out of the commission.
So unfortunately, I recognize that with Obi not here, I think I am the only planning commissioner. Josie, were you on the commission when we adopted the overnight accommodations overlay? You were not. So, and Trish, you may be able to, to contribute some perspective as well, more from the commissioners, yourself and others who were on the commission at the time that this was being adopted. So how did we get to where we are? I can cover, and then we can reorient to where, what remains, where we want to go, and so on. And I don't want to fully take the stage and speak on behalf of anyone, so I'll just be really clear that this is, you know, me representing the planning commission's actions taken as recommendations, but from my perspective. And there are other people who have been on the body who, you know, may have different passions or different interests or opinions on how we could have or should have proceeded. There, at the time that the moratorium was in place, and we are no longer in the moratorium. By law, the moratorium only applies for six months. And I, I recognize that as an added effect of the changes made to our land use code, it did restrict where these developments could be placed in our county, but we are no longer in a moratorium, and that has expired. So the reason for adopting the moratorium was largely to just sort of pump the brakes. There was a period of time of massive growth, some real, some perceived, but generally an overwhelming sentiment in the community that development was just happening too fast in the sectors of tourism without respect for or consideration for the impact on the local community, the costs on our infrastructure, the cost to our quality of life. And we wanted as a community to be able to say, this is what the path for development in the sector should look like based off of existing community values and not what has existed in the past. So it was not part of a larger general plan visioning, but it was sort of a, some cumulative action based off of years of citizen input that had also followed work on affordable housing, draft economic development survey, and so on. And there is a very real impact in the community from, from tourism. I mean, we see it in the city and the effects on our water treatment plant, which we had to replace. We see it in our traffic patterns and the noise complaints that our, our citizens bring up very regularly. And also just a sort of general sense of the scale. You know, we had come off of the 50th anniversary of Canyonlands and the 100th anniversary of National Parks and the Mighty Five campaign, and we just saw like the hockey stick of visitation in our community. So, so that's generally what led up to it, an opportunity to catch our breath and say, what do we want to look like going forward? And essentially where we landed was, let's let what exists and what is vested to exist build out before we decide how much additional, what types of additional and so on, growth in this sector we think serves our community's interests, both from an economic development perspective and from a citizen quality of life perspective. And so that was the real sentiment and the real value behind being able to hit the pause button. Let's build out what, what would build out and then restart. So in that process, we developed development standards for any new developments, but we also did not account for any expansion of existing developments, which is something that I know the county commission has had a sort of an action group on, and Josie and Obi were contributing to the conversation as, as a point from the planning commission. So those are some of the open questions that we have on the table. You know, one is, as this growth has continued, as the build-out has continued, what is the actual realistic build out that we anticipate from all of our vested investments in, in these categories that have already been approved and will build out by vested right? Two, you know, how is this, how is this affected? People who live within Grand County's boundaries, do we feel as though this has had a noticeable impact on our quality of life? Are we still not, not sure? Has there not been, has, has there been a negative quality of life? Because it's just still going so fast, you know? And I don't think that that's something we have an answer to. I think we continue to have perceived impact and real impact, but what those are and how big of the gap between those two is not something I feel as though I'm, I could confidently assess. And I guess the last thing is, as we have increased our use standards, one of the reasons for that was to for any additional, excuse me, sorry, one moment. For any additional overnight accommodations that would be adopted in the future to make sure that the standard of development that they were handed, that they were, were held to equitably offset the impact to our community, to our natural resources, to our shared visual space and so on. And so we've had applicants come before us with some pretty impressive plans to say like, this is how we, we plan to, to meet this standard, to meet these, these development use standards. And critically, here is why what we propose will benefit the community, because that's a critical piece of this. It's not, you can't just say, I want to build this. It has to have some vested interest in the community to balance local rights with, you know, visitor rights, and, and rights is the wrong word, sorry, local interests with developer interests and so on. So hopefully that's a good survey. I don't know. Hopefully I didn't just total, you know, butcher that, but I, I do think that that gives a pretty good sense of like how we got there, why we're where we are, what remains to be done. Josie, I know that you've been invested in with Obi, looking at what remains. I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have anything else to contribute from your perspective and those conversations?
Well, I would be interested in, even if we have a rough estimate right now of enumerating what still are vested rights that could be built out. Because I know just what has been built out since the moratorium has definitely shocked a lot of locals thus far. And I think most people would be horrified to know that there are still more coming. And I do think that that has a huge impact on how we proceed moving forward. And I feel like, and this, you know, can definitely reflect the circles that I run in, but I feel like the overwhelming feedback that I get from people is, let's just do a permanent moratorium because we already have too much overnight accommodations capacity for this town. And so, you know, that's kind of one extreme side of things, but yeah, do you have an idea of how many vested projects are still in the pipeline?
I personally don't, I would be very interested to research that.
I personally don't, I would be very interested to research that and I appreciate you bringing that up. I was, I was kind of looking more just recently, um, at trying to enumerate how many housing, uh, like new construction, um, for long-term housing units have been applied for and possibly even gotten through certi- certificate of occupancy stage to kind of see where we're at. But I think we have to do the build out number two. And what, and specifically what types of, um, overnight accommodation, are they, or you know, I would be really interested to see if, if it's, and where, like in town? Or are we talking south or north corridor? Are we talking about campgrounds that potentially could be built out or a ho- or hotels? Cause that's like, that's, I think that's what the crux of this workshop would be, um, trying to get at is the differences in those kinds of, um, accommodate overnight accommodation types and where they might be, you know, having a different impact than in the past.
Yeah. And another question that I would have, um, because I know that as a result of the moratorium we put, we, we changed our sort of code requirements of new overnight accommodations development quite a bit. But of course that didn't apply to any of the stuff that was already vested. So, you know, I feel like there's kind of a conversation to have there of how we might be able to pull in projects retroactively, uh, just in terms of things like, um, more sustainable landscaping and gray water use and, um, worker housing and, you know, I don't know what leverage we really have to do that retroactively on, um, existing developments, but I think that there is an interest in exploring that. Um, and yeah, just around, uh, like hotels that I know are still slated to be built. I mean, I know I can think of at least one in the southern corridor that I know is going to be built out, but I'm sure that there are many that I'm not aware of currently. So, yeah, these are all really important things to discuss.
So two things, Josie, I just want to address just so we, um, because the nature of what actions are available to us and sort of the language those actions fall under is, um, is important. So for example, uh, we are not in a position under state law to oppose an indefinite moratorium. Um, and we are not under a moratorium. Um, you know, even if for all intents and purposes, it is more difficult to build one of these types of developments, uh, it is available to developers and the rules under which they can apply to the county and that the county will use to assess it are, are clearly laid out in our land use code. Cause I, I do think that that was a point of confusion at the time that this broader community conversation and action was, was taking place. And I just, I think it's important to just record that. Um, as far as retroactive, uh, standards, it's not something that this body would be able to do. I do think we have seen ways that our business code has allowed us to apply standards for different uses. Um, you know, based off of business licenses, but that's a conversation that if it's something we wanted to look into, we, we'd need to bring to the county attorney to understand the parameters of expiration there. I just don't think it's something that we should be discussing in this meeting until we've had that conversation. So, um, the, the large items, just to sort of outline, and then what I'd love is just a quick round robin of the group of sort of your priorities or vision, any additional questions that you think we should answer, uh, and then we can move forward. So we have, uh, first of all, a question of the existing status quo. Um, the existing standards that we have adopted, the existing overlay maps as they are currently adopted. Um, I have personally not heard any community interest in changing the status quo. And I know we have had several developers who have come forward wanting to work underneath them. And from what I understand from speaking with a few county commissioners, there's not interest on the body of holistically revisiting those. So I'll just state that as my understanding of the current situation. There's the question of expansion. So if an existing development wanted to add additional rooms or expand their footprint, we currently do not have a mechanism for that to be, um, something that, that we would support with our land use code. And that is one I do think that we need to put some heat on because for both interest in some cases to expand for things such as worker housing, um, as well as I think it's interesting to think about, uh, how we might upgrade the energy efficiency standards and the general footprint of some of these developments, because we have a lot of older developments. Most of our older developments tend to be in the city, but in the county we do have some, um, it's a, it's I think something worth discussing to make sure that we have a vision on the table. So there's the question of just use standards. Then there's this question of our, our specific uses, our, our three categories of use. And staff has laid out in the staff report, five potential categories off of those three. So some question of splitting out, do glamping and dude ranching from RV campground. And then, um, this question of traditional bread and bed and breakfast, which is where the homeowner resides in the home as their primary site of occupancy and lets out rooms on short-term bases versus this sort of like Airbnb condo model, which is they do not live there, it may not be their primary source of residence. So, um, I will withhold my comments on those two, but I would love to get some, some discussion in the body around, um, those two items. So sort of expansion use standards, um, the current use designations, three versus five versus however many, as well as any other things that you think that you would like us to discuss. So, uh, I'll withhold my comments to the end. I think Steve, Josie, Tony, we've lost Rick and, uh, Tricia, but hopefully they'll join again in a moment.
Can I jump in? Can I jump in?
John, I'm sorry.
I just, I just wanted to add one, a couple more, you're the kind of trade-off queen, Emily. So, uh, one thing I would like to add is workforce housing flipping that is a potential for workforce housing to be developed first, that would then trigger OAOs. We've had some interest in that. And I think the other thing is to think, uh, in terms of, uh, kind of the easy wins and how easy those are as far as changes are concerned. It seems to me a bed and breakfast in most cases, as you've described, that is owner occupied is much more residentially, compatible than a commercial rental. At least that's my experience where I've been. I know there's been some challenges with bed and breakfast operating, but that's one of those, that's one of those things that enforcement that we need to take care of. So I guess that was, that would be one of the things that there's some, there's some level of, uh, evaluation that needs to be thought of. Cause I think the impacts around OAOs primarily were triggered by the lack of housing and for supportive housing. And, uh, if that's the case, is there a quid pro quo that could be put into place for not only expansion, uh, but also for new ones?
That's a great call out. Thank you. All right. So I'm just going to go ahead and poll the body. You don't have to contribute, but are, so I added two, and then John added this, uh, question, uh, well, two, the sort of compatibility of, um, BMBs and residential zones, traditional BMBs compared to the overnight condo Airbnb type model, uh, and how that may relate to the ability to add more housing that is attainable by locals. And then this question of incentivizing, um, essentially incentivizing workforce housing through some sort of OAO incentive. So, um, Steve, Josie, Tony, any other topics of conversation that you'd like to raise that we can then use to focus our discussion today?
I have some thoughts on the discussion topics already brought up, but I don't have anything to add.
Um, well, I actually, let's do this, let's quickly circle up and then we'll, we'll go through them. Cause I do, I do think it's worth going a little bit deeper into these once we have a sort of discrete set of, we've narrowed the, the boundaries of conversation. Um, so we'll definitely come back to you, Tony, because I want to make sure to capture your opinion. Josie and Steve, any additional sort of parameters of discussion we want to raise around today?
I'm, I'm not really on the same page as far as what you brought up, Emily, like diving deeper, um, into those topics. And I also, I do want to, and this might just be raising some questions to get some numbers on, um, in a subsequent meeting, but talking more about the assured housing and what has happened with that. Um, cause I know, well, I guess I don't know. I am assuming that we've probably had some overnight accommodations that have been granted. And so therefore they, the owners or the developer needs to either provide that assured housing for our workforce or they need to pay into this fund. And I'm, and I've just, I'm curious where that fund is. Well, how much is in that fund if people have paid into it? Have we been enforcing that? Have these, um, you know, if there's been a hotel or, or whatever, um, any sort of accommodate overnight accommodation? Have they actually, you know, created these, these units that they're bound to as part of the, the agreement? Um, and also just what, what is happening with that money? If, if they are paying into that money and it's just in some county coffer, you know, what, what is it doing? Um, so I'm not sure if that's really, it's, it's related to this, this topic, but, and maybe you listen, you, you might have some info on that or I just saw you popped on, so maybe you have something to say.
Well, I, I'm, that's a really good question. And I guess I want to, I would like to clarify because I think probably we haven't had any money going into that pot because if I'm correct in understanding, we, we haven't had any new OAO, um, applications approved. And that's the only way that we would get the assured housing is through the new, the new zone being applied somewhere. And so I, I, I don't think for the, um, for the developments that were already grandfathered in, I don't know that they are beholden to requiring or to, uh, that requirement for assured housing. So, but I might be wrong.
So would that be to say that since we have passed this, um, this ordinance, there haven't been any, um, units or developments approved?
No new OAO.
No new, no, yeah. That would be beholden to following ordinance.
That's what I understood, but I could be wrong because I'm, I'm still learning. I haven't been here for, since, you know, when it was.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah.
Say something, there was actually a legal challenge, a titties challenge, uh, on a number of developments and those were successful. Uh, and they weren't, they didn't go to litigation, but there was, we settled with them. One was on Kane Creek, commission might be aware of that, uh, which is a hundred, uh, short-term rental units. We'd have to check the uninsured housing component, but I think that, that provision is still there.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I would, I would be interested in, and I'm jotting that down as something I can research as well.
Yeah. And that'd be great if maybe there was anyone and if they're slipping through the cracks, like they either gotta pay up or, you know, create some houses.
Yeah, agreed. Um, I wanted to just, there's one other little thing I wanted to add in terms of the parameters that we're talking about for the different types of uses. And one of those was just pertaining to like the dude ranch glamping kind of use where what we've currently be, uh, what we currently have, um, kind of in the pipeline for applications in which is kind of like bringing up this idea of where maybe we want to talk about, um, sort of differentiating the impacts of different uses is some of the applications and some of the interest is really, um, kind of a narrow idea of just, uh, and it goes to glamping. It's kind of the luxury, um, small capacity, like maybe six to 12 or maybe not more than 20, uh, patrons that they would have at one time. And so that, and that's something that wouldn't require, you know, improvements on infrastructure so much as, as opposed to a hotel. So that I just wanted to put that in there as far as, um, the category for glamping and dude ranches is that it might, we need to be thinking about those as maybe being a less, uh, less capacity, I guess, in, of, of, um, rentals spaces. Sorry.
And, um, related to assured housing, um, sorry for the opera in the background. Um, it, the way that assured housing applied to different types of developments varied. So, um, when we were adopting that ordinance, we specifically looked at the ability to pay and disincentivization of any additional development that varying thresholds of, um, assured housing investment would cause. And, um, I will have to review it myself, but I don't believe that campgrounds were adopted into that or residential development. I believe it's only larger, uh, footprint, sort of the large hotel motel, um, developments that you'd see. So, uh, can't speak on specifics because I can't recall offhand, but, uh, there was a, a difference there. Josie, do you have any, so, so just to kind of play back, so we've got, um, some areas of additional research that we are identifying. Those include the number of vested units outstanding, um, and how that compares to, um, sort of existing growth patterns of new residential housing units and potentially the actual pace of build out of those vested units, as well as a question of the current status of assured housing, how much, if any, money has been collected and how that's being apportioned or planned. Um, we have, uh, an area of conversation around sort of looking at these types of uses and some of the specifics underneath them, uh, that may or may not deem to be separable. And we have this question of, um, both just general expansion standards, which, um, would apply to any development that wanted to expand. And this question of incentive or trade-off, is there a way to attach that to some sort of affordable housing, which is kind of the assured housing venue, but, um, you know, maybe it's on B. So that is what I have so far in my notes. Is there anything else just as far as kind of shortening the parameters of discussion we want to capture? And staff, with the conversation that you have been having with the public, are there any other burning questions you would like direction on so that we can take action, so you can move this forward to the commission in whichever way we feel is necessary?
I don't think so. I think we've, we've, we've got it covered in terms of the, um, the direction that we're asking.
Um, it is 505 and only because we have a number of people on our call, um, and we are not able to stream live. I do want to just pause our meeting agenda for a second, citizens, we heard if anybody would like to make a comment. If you would, we're going to hold it to the standard of three minutes per comment. Um, but if you'd like to make a comment and you're on the call, I will invite you to just post in the chat and, uh, we'll give you an opportunity to be heard. Otherwise we'll, we'll go ahead and move on into the rest of our discussion. Okay. So I see two people who'd like to comment. Um, Andy Fass, I may pronounce your last name wrong, I'm sorry, Fassig and Matt Karras. Um, so Andy, I'll allow you to come off of mute. If you wouldn't mind putting your camera on and stating your name correctly. And I apologize if I butchered it and then I'll give you three minutes to, um, address the body.
All right. I, I think I'm off mute and I'm trying to, uh, make my video functional. I don't see it on.
You're good. We can hear you, you're, you're going to just go for it.
So we, I, I represent a, the landowner, um, working with, uh, Michael Toomey for a, a small retreat, um, that would fall in the glamping category. And perhaps our OAO application that's in the pipeline is part of what's bringing this discussion up. I don't know, um, but it, it seems, uh, seems very, very appropriate. But, um, yeah, we're, you know, our plan is very small. And the one area of discussion that I didn't hear come up that I would love to be part of your, your, uh, conversation is, uh, uh, where geography, our particular.
Andy, we may have just lost you. Is that just me?
No, you're right. I, I can't hear him either. Sorry, Andy, are you still there? Can you repeat like the last couple, maybe thirty seconds? You went out.
So sorry, yes. Our, our location is very remote and far from Moab. And as such, I, I would love to hear some of the conversation be in relation to how it, how a, an area that's under consideration for an overlay, uh, impacts the town of Moab. The town of Moab is really the, the area of concern. The, you know, Grand County is grand, huge amount of land. And, uh, where we are is an hour and a half drive from, from Moab and only a 45-minute drive from Fruta. So logically you can see that it, it's not as much of a concern. So I'd love to, for that to be, you know, the northern corridor or other areas far removed from the primary areas of congestion around Moab. Uh, I'd love for that to be part of your conversation in, in refining the OAO. And, uh, that was my comment.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us. Uh, Matt, same thing, would you mind? Same thing, would you mind coming off of mute and if you have it, your video and stating your full name?
I don't mind. Can you hear me? Okay, I started my video. Can you see me?
We can see and hear you. You are all good.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yeah, so I, um, my name is Matt Karius. Um, I co-founded a company called Entrata Camps and Conservation. And we're under contract to buy five hundred and fifty acres in rural Grand County. And we have a, an, uh, OAO application in the pipeline as well, just like Andy. We started this project well before the moratorium began, and unfortunately, we, we didn't get our ducks in a row. Um, so now we obviously, you know, face this additional, I guess hurdle level of scrutiny that we, you know, wouldn't have faced a few years ago. I've been involved in, uh, sustainable tourism development around the world for twenty-five years. And I actually think that the standards you've written in the OAO are, are very solid. I think, um, they paint a picture of a type of tourism that would be good for Grand County and for the, uh, communities. So I would encourage you, uh, as you're, you know, considering new applications to, to, um, just, and I'm not suggesting this is what you would do, but rather than just sort of being, uh, you know, taking a knee-jerk stand against any type of new tourism development, um, think about it thoughtfully, think about how, uh, the applications apply to the standards that you've written. Um, our project, for example, like, like Andy's is, is remote, it doesn't really affect the town of Grand County. It's very sustainable, it's very low volume, it's, you know, sixteen units, but a, a very high price point. So the contribution to the local task, tax, uh, base would be significant. The, um, you know, the, the jobs created would be very good jobs relative to other jobs in tourism in terms of benefits and pay. So, um, yeah, I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak. And I, I think, uh, I understand the challenges. Like I said, I work in tourism development in different parts of the world, including the Galapagos Islands, which has had significant over tourism in the past twenty years. And I've helped, uh, craft policies there to, to figure out ways that tourism can continue to benefit communities. Without creating a lot of the problems that we've seen with tourism growth like you've had, Moab. So, yeah, I, I think you guys are on the right track. I, I hope you'll, uh, just y- use these, this opportunity to, to think about the kind of tourism that you want and that would, uh, benefit the community. And yeah, I think, uh, you'll, you'll be in a good place.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, Reed?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're all good.
All right, um, you guys have heard me lots of comments in the past, but I just kind of want to touch base on some of the things pointed out today. Um, I did forward, uh, sheet to Alyssa and John just barely of the twenty nineteen, um, list of hotels and stuff that needed to be built out, um, just to give them a starting point. Um, but to date, there has been no overnight accommodations, new applications approved. So everything that is on that list, um, is vested and allowed to be built. Um, I think my main concern through all of this is that, you know, when the moratorium happened, there were hotels going up like crazy. Um, and I mean, I was even one of them. I was like, I didn't like what was being built and, but at the same time, there wasn't a lot of discussion being put into the different types of accommodations. And that's what frustrated me through the whole moratorium. Um, you know, for two years I've been involved trying to state that, you know, each type of accommodation is different. And I, I hope that through these discussions, however they go forward, um, that each type of accommodation is really dissected, you know, let's, let's do campgrounds, let's do glamping resorts. Let's do bed and breakfast, let's do each one of them individually, so that they're fleshed out completely. And that if somebody wants to come here and do it, they, they know what's, what they're getting into. You know, having a campground lumped into the same conversation for two years of a hotel has been extremely frustrating for me. Uh, even when I applied last year, I had people commenting during my public hearing for my campground that they didn't want this hotel to be built. So the word overnight accommodations to a lot of citizens in this town correlates to hotels. And that's my experience through the moratorium, through my development that I tried to do last year. Um, even to this day, you know, overnight accommodations kind of defaults to hotels. Um, and so I just hope that there's a, a fair discussion across the board for all of these different types of businesses. Yeah, because we're all different and there is needs in this county. Um, whether they want to be accepted or not, there, there are needs that need to be filled. Um, there are problems that exist um, that some of us are trying to help. Um, so I just hope that there's a really good conversation that's broken down to many levels. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Reed. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizens to be heard and we'll go back to our conversation and, and thank you everyone for sort of that natural stop. Um, I will just also note that this is a workshop and I know, John, Elise, you mentioned wanting some direction, but I do think, if we were to take a direction forward to the county commission, I would prefer that we took the outcomes from this workshop to, you know, come up with a plan, especially when the larger body is here because we're a little short on members. So there will be other opportunities for input, uh, across this conversation. Um, okay, so let's do this. Uh, let's touch on these big three. So we've, we've identified some additional research that we think needs to be done. Let's come back to that as under, sort of the, the end of this is like to future considerations. The topics that have come up are, um, looking at these different types of uses. So is there interest in considering splitting up the three uses into additional categories? Or highly unlikely, I think, but consolidating them into smaller number of categories, um, and any conversation there. Um, we have a topic around, um, uh, sort of workforce housing incentivization and then, uh, expansion. So.
Emily, can I ask a quick question just to clarify? When you say the three, um, topics, which, which three specifically? Just, I want to make sure I'm on the same page.
So rather than having one overlay zone for all accom- all overnight accommodation overlays, a developer has to apply to one of three. So it's, it's specific to the uses. So for example, the use standard, it's not, it's not significant differences, but there is a dis- distinction between OAO campground and RV park and OAO hotel and motel. And there are some differences in use standards, um, that are specific to the impact of those different uses. And, and Reed is one of the members of the community that was very, um, uh, influential in, in staying and being a part of that conversation. So they, they did come from citizen input. Um, and so staff and their staff report on page five of our digital packet, at the, at the bottom of point G laid out what could be a slightly more, um, targeted set of overlays. So for example, is there a difference between RV campgrounds and glamping and dude ranches? Is that difference significant enough that we think there should be two different overnight, over, or excuse me, overlays for one for each? And if we were to look at adopting redevelopment standards or expansion standards rather, or updating our existing use tables, how would that differ between the two? So that's kind of what I'm getting at is are these the right categories? Is there interest in expanding to these categories? And if there's so, you know, what do we think should be done with them?
Okay, I guess maybe I'm just confused where I see, where I've heard you say three things. When I look at the land use code, it, it looks like there's four categories, where there's the bed and breakfast, dude ranch or destination resort. Recovery, RV campground, trailer park, and then residential units for overnight accommodations.
I was in thinking dude ranch got adopted. Am I remembering that incorrectly? I thought there were three.
Uh, I'm looking at, I mean, I'm looking at the ordinance right now in the land use code. And I see it, there's a provision in there, the whole section B, dude ranch or destination resort. And I'm not, I don't, I'm just, I'm just trying to follow along, um, so that I'm just slightly confused.
I, I, I know that we have existing use standards that could fit underneath that, but I, I may be misspeaking. So I apologize if I am. Thank you for calling that out.
So what you're looking at, sorry, if you're looking at, um, Steve, you're looking at use table or you're looking at the development status?
I'm looking at the, let's see, it's four point six.
Those are developments time.
Point six.
So, but if you look at the use table, I don't think, uh, dude ranches are there, you scrubbed, they're wiped out.
Interesting.
So I guess there's the question, because you, you know, right now you can apply for, uh, overnight accommodations overlay rezone. But, and, and you can specify it's for campground and RV or for, uh, various different categories. I, I'm gonna look that up right now too, to just see what you're seeing.
I'll go ahead and share my screen because I, in the use table, we.
Okay, y'all are on the use table.
Yeah, so the use table represented the state beforehand, right? And so you had these various uses that could be allowed under various underlying zones. And if you go into the use table, you'll see that under that, um, use definition, we've actually scrapped that from any of the underlying zones. And then it takes you here to this part, uh, to the four point six point three, which shows the overlays within the zoning map. So you do have these particular overlays that can be applied to, uh, augments, adjust the underlying zone. And this is the, the current map. So hopefully that's a little, I can see how that could be confusing. And, and, but you're absolutely right. I mean, we do have this particular use called out in our pre-existing land use code. Um, but it's, it's not, and I don't know the, um, I don't know if the, the one north of town, if that qualifies it or what category that is. I, I, I don't know the answer to that, but it's not really a dude ranch.
Which one of the town?
Um, the, I'm blanking on, you know, the, the shootout place across from the dinosaur park.
Oh, bar, the chuck wagon area?
Oh.
I don't know that that has a specific, um, I, I, I don't know the nature of that.
Is that vested?
It's, it's been there forever, but it's.
No, I bet.
They're there. So, yeah, the, the point is, is that's the difference between the use table that you would see and then the actual, uh, adopted overlay zones. And so if a developer wanted to apply for one of these zones, they would apply, for example, the RV campground zone to be applied to their, their parcel.
Yeah, and to clarify, maybe, um, for Steve also, I think one of the questions we are asking is whether to bring back, uh, either B and Bs as a use or dude ranch slash glamping as a use. And on that side, I'm not even sure why those are paired together because those seem like two different things to me as well.
The dude ranch. About whether to bring them back as a use. They are a use under our land use code, but they are not designated into any, un, in, un, within any of our underlying zones. Again, because it's, it is important when we talk about, you know, the, the nature of, of land use and rights and so on, that it's, they have the right to develop those, but not under any of our underlying zones. According to our ordinance, if they want to expand our overlay zones, they need to explicitly apply for that. So just to work there. And the question is, is there an interest in looking at any of these categories? Because we could say, hey, we actually think there should be dude ranches and under this particular overlay, or we think that should be its own overlay. Or, and maybe not. So just to be.
Emily, if I could help you with some of that direction too, with some of the direction, you may want to direct staff to research something rather than try, trying to come up with those standards yourself. So if you wanted to choose, let's see, bed, bed and breakfast, you know, staff, go out and find out the best practices for bed and breakfast, what those limitations are. You mentioned owner occupied, that's definitely one of them. Are there other standards you may want to consider, or do you want staff to report back on other standards on any one of those areas? So we can help you with that before, because it's hard to, it's hard to get out of the weeds sometimes. So any general direction like that would be helpful.
Okay, Tony.
I was gonna.
Steve, go ahead, Tony.
John, you just hit the nail right on the head for me. Um, I was gonna ask if we had stopped to think about commonalities among uses that are maybe more empirical than, you know, is it a dude ranch or a resort? Or I don't, I don't know where that language came from. I don't want to offend anybody if someone wrote that in this meeting. But is there something a little bit more like maybe per unit costs or a revenue to acreage index or a distance from development or something a little bit more scientific we can look at? If we want to break these things down, I was in a conversation once where we talked for thirty-five minutes about the functional differences between a fiber optic utility line crossing a river and a low voltage power line crossing a river. Functionally, they are identical, you know? So as far as like impacts. So if there's, you know, if we're talking about the height of the wire and the width of the crossing and the size of the poles maybe instead of, uh, I, well, my campground's gonna have teepees. Yeah, yeah, well, but mine's gonna have chuck wagons. I mean, that's, well, you know?
I, I totally hear, hear what you're saying and I completely agree. We, what we need to be able to, I think, get the general direction for staff to go forward with, uh, defining those types a little better. And I think what the, I think the general concept for me with dude ranch and, and grouping it with glamping is that it was, it has more to do with the number of, um, rental units. Like a, an RV campground is already defined in our code as a maximum of sixty campsites. That's as much as you can go with that, um, overlay district. Um, we don't have one, I don't think that's, that's the point, is we don't really have anything that speci- specifies um, for a, a smaller type of, of glamping luxury kind of retreat use. And so I think we need to start defining that and maybe that would be our next step.
Yeah, I mean, I, if I can share a personal opinion, um, recognizing that I'm the new guy and I don't want to be reinventing the wheel or blowing anything up, right? Um, the revenue to acreage index on a bell curve is, it works a lot for planning campgrounds and stuff like that or hotels, yada, yada. Because, you know, you don't want, uh, you know, uh, a land use might be inappropriate if, uh, one site costs seven hundred dollars and you're giving them an eighth of an acre to park on. You know, in one spot, that might not be appropriate. That might go better somewhere else. Well, you know, that's on one end of the bell curve and on the other end, you're a high-rise hotel, not using that much acreage. But also very, very expensive inflates housing costs generally. Um, so that's, that's the way I do the math in my head. You know, there's a sweet spot.
Um, Steve, did you have a comment as well?
Um, I did. I think it was, um, maybe as John was saying, you know, kind of giving some, some research assignments to staff. Um, and I just, you know, and this is a little into the weeds and, um, I think looking at Telly Ride and what they did with their, uh, overnight accommodations, because I, 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 I think we've all tiptoed around it or we've said it a little bit, but we haven't maybe gotten the full consensus. But it sounds like we're wanting to kind of parse out B and Bs from like the, kind of the Airbnb's. Uh, I, I'll just share that I, I've heard, um, from citizens that they are also, people would love to be able to, to rent out, you know, a room that they're living in. And I think, uh, you know, I would be a huge proponent for, um, you know, people being able to make a little extra income by being, you know, kind of, uh, you know, resident occupying the house that they're renting out. And I think looking to what Telly Ride did back to my original point here, um, might be a really good starting point. I think what they did was, I think they levitated an additional tax. And so I have no idea, you know, how we could do this with state law and whatnot, but they levited an additional tax that actually paid for a staff member to basically be the enforcement to go and see on Airbnb, okay, did these people get the proper permits and everything? And so they could, that was kind of the enforcement thing, because I gather that's our, one of our main issues here with things like Airbnb, VBO, VRBO and, and whatnot. And so looking to, to what Tileride did, um, uh, could be really beneficial. And, and possibly open some doors for, for folks here to make a little bit more money on the side. And it's, I, I don't see that as a huge detriment, um, you know, because they're there in the house. Whereas when we have these corporations that buy up all our real estate and rent them out to whoever and no one's there for quality control. You know, I think that's the, the side that we're really wanting to, you know, prevent from going forward.
Josie?
Yeah, so I mean, in the general discussion, I feel like I've been taking notes and, and we're talking about a lot of different things here. So I'm kind of, kind of like, do a wide swath, um, just of things that have come up in this discussion. Um, I really appreciate the citizens to be heard comments from Andy and Matt. Um, it's like they were reading my mind because that was actually one thing in. It's like they were reading my mind, because that was actually one thing in sort of our uh thinking of, you know, kind of discussion topics, is I I was thinking both from a perspective of enforcement and oversight, and also from a perspective of um economic development potential about those kind of farther reaches of the county, because I know that Thompson has some renewed activity. Um, I know Cisco has some renewed activity, and then, of course, there is that whole I seventy corridor. So I am interested in that as part of the discussion, because um I I definitely am intrigued by the potential of sort of spreading out impacts, especially with projects that might be fairly self-contained, which it seems like. Um, and this is now kind of going to some of Tony's comments, which I think are great, and this piggybacks off of a lot of John's instincts, which is to be very data-driven um and numbers-driven. And I'm also curious in sort of some of these really hard definitions, but it seems like in addition to quantitative definitions like, you know, revenue per acre or things like that, I feel like there's also qualitative definitions. And some of those, I think, um are whether something is more likely to be locally owned and operated or not locally owned and operated. And I think bed and breakfast and potentially dude ranches seem to like fall more into that category of places that might be, though not necessarily, um, well, definitely in the case of B and Bs, but um, you know, kind of locally owned and operated. And so I'm kind of interested in fleshing out what what some of those parameters might be to distinguish between um types. The question of expansion, um, I'm kind of of two minds. I think with expansion, I would really be interested in using that as potential leverage to have some of those retroactive standards um to existing developments. As far as uh I have like kind of a visceral resistance to that kind of logic of building more overnight accommodations in order to create housing. It feels like buying something that you don't want because you have a coupon. And so that's just kind of my opinion on that sort of logic uh around ways to gain um more affordable housing. I am definitely aware, and I think um, you know, going through the process around um Reed's project and knowing that we're in this tough position right now, where I think a lot of people's instincts are just to say no right now, because we feel like we need to play catch-up. But um I do agree that there are just different types of projects with different types of merits. And I am not necessarily interested in saying no, we never want to have another new overnight accommodations development ever, ever again. But I just want to be very, very intentional and specific about what we want to vision um moving forward. And so that's where I really would like to go back to that data. And I think this is some of my really vague direction to the staff is to really think about um, you know, and we haven't quite talked about what ratios we might be at now of um like residential units to overnight accommodations units. But I'm interested in using some of those numbers as sort of natural caps. So we're not just making judgment calls, application by application, but we have sort of these parameters that we're constantly staying in. And, you know, one of those parameters might be, you know, water usage and and very real things like that. And some of those might be natural caps um around certain ratios of balance um within the community. Yeah, I think that was most of my thoughts on what we've discussed so far and kind of direction that I'd I'd like to give to staff. I'm really interested if moving forward, um, we are encouraging or trying to kind of incentivize through code and development standards or otherwise, certain projects over other projects. I I do think things that clearly benefit the local community through either ownership or through, you know, really low impacts or beneficial impacts are definitely desirable. And and that would be my my hope moving forward is to really focus on moving towards those. And I do think, as we've talked before, that we do need to continue to revisit the B and B conversation, because I do think that is one of those things that uh at face value seems to be clearly a more local local beneficial use, um but has been kind of thrown under the bus by um just the way things have played out. And, you know, it seems like even a couple requirements, which we may or may not already have around you know, parking, um off-road vehicles, and maybe not having them developed in cul-de-sacs or dead-end streets. You know, things that are very specifically meant to mitigate what people have had problems with in B and Bs in the past. And then, yeah, to the the overnight rentals and sort of a a model set by Telluride. I do think that both A, obviously with Utah, we are in this really tricky spot of enforcement being really, really difficult for us. And uh I think that's unfortunately something that we keep having to bring to the table without necessarily having a solution for. I do know with Telluride, there is a significant amount of missing housing stock, because it is all overnight rentals. And they are by and large the type of thing where you rent an entire house from a property management company. Um, and it's very hard to convert those, you know, partially into um local housing. And so, you know, I I think Telluride is just as much of a a warning as a possible solution. Um, I know there's a lot of effort there right now to actually put a cap on overnight rentals and have a lottery system every year. And I I don't know what's going to come of that, but I know that they're at a crisis point with specifically residential-based overnight accommodations. So I do think we need to be really careful about where we're going in that direction and what we can do given uh the state's hindrances on our ability to enforce.
I had something real quick on that, Josie, because I I love that you brought up that point and maybe just uh throw something out there. And this is just, you know, me not being an expert on this, I just wonder if um to that point, you know, if someone applies for this business um license, you know, they get X number of days per year that they can actually rent this out. Because I think of, you know, um, you know, someone that they want to rent out a room in their house, or even their house, and they leave for, you know, one of our busy weekends or week. Why should I, why shouldn't our residents be able to access some of that capital? By, yeah, you know, we're going to rent it out just to, you know, I'm going to leave, because let's say on a specific week of the year, I leave all the time. And this isn't me specifically, you know, why not be able to make a little bit of money off of that? And if you're limited by only being able to do that a certain number of days per year, then we're not, you know, then it's not going to sit empty or go solely to this overnight accommodation um industry. And it's still going to be there, a house for a local. It's just they're making a little bit more off it on the side. And so I have no idea, you know, are we allowed to do that um in this state? And so that that's, that's kind of more of the nuance of of why I bring that up. So where it could go, not sure.
Yeah, oh, I was just gonna add one more thing, because I agree absolutely, Stephen. I've even thought, you know, with our little house that we built here, wouldn't it be great if we were like gone on vacation for two weeks and we were able to make a sizable amount of money compared to our normal, you know, Moab wage-based income? So I agree that I I think in an ideal world, that is something that we could offer as a potential um income stream for locals. I think the feedback that I have gotten a lot from both, you know, people who are professionally in the housing realm and also um from people who live here is just they're really scared that we can what's the word I'm looking for, that we can kind of design that the way that we want to, without it sort of bleeding into these other uses that are really hard for us to enforce, uh and that we might have a lot of people sort of taking advantage of the language um and the lack of enforcement and abusing it. So I think I agree with you, and if there's a way to do that, I'm interested, and maybe that's a direction to staff as well, is if there's a not-so-dicey way to actually achieve that uh without all these other things getting in at the same time. I totally agree with that. I also think at this point in time that I would love to pursue, and this is a totally different conversation, but ways that property owners who would benefit from something like that to also um be incentivized to build, you know, whatever possible local housing. That could be passive income, you know, and that goes into like the discussion of ADUs and things like that. But I I think in my mind, I'm like, okay, like passive income is obviously really nice for people who have already, you know, built their own home and are are living modestly and and could benefit from that. Um, and I I think also we can sort of move that in the direction of uh in- incentivizing people to just rent long-term instead of short-term towards some of the same means or outcomes.
Yeah, and throw and throw in an extra, um, you know, nightly rental or, you know, tax, so that way we can pay that person to enforce. And then we can crack down on all these other people that we know are abusing the system, and, you know, we can't really do anything about it. So I, you know, just throw that out there, it might be a way to, you know, even solve more than our future predicted issues, but our current ones that we currently have no teeth for enforcement about.
Um, let me contribute some of my thoughts on some of this conversation. Um, and then what I'd love to do is just recap and move forward into direction for staff. And bear with me, because I I want to hit a couple of these things that have come up and just sort of contribute my take on them with a little bit of context for the conversations that led to where we are. I'll just state, like, generally speaking, uh, one of my principles of looking at all of these projects and and planning efforts that come before us is to create as much opportunity for as many people as possible. And um that often means sometimes putting the needs of community owners who don't own property or have not been able to opt into property uh by higher pedestal, because not having the opportunity to opt into property ownership doesn't mean your voice should matter less for property owners. I will contribute a little bit of sort of that devil's advocate to the conversation that we were just having here in this exchange, which is if you allow the people who own property in this community to construct ADUs or or be able to use their houses as a passive income stream, it is likely to have the added effect of making those who haven't had an opportunity to opt into the market further removed from that opportunity. It would likely raise the cost of of uh land and the cost of housing, because you now have the ability to ask for more, given the fact that you have that offset. And it also makes it a lucrative business model for people who can opt into one or more of of these homes. Um, and I think that that is one of these really tricky parts of this conversation is, uh, while I fully agree, the more that we can give people a way to get attainable housing, and in my mind, attainable housing is both decreasing the cost of housing and increasing my ability to afford the housing that exists, um, that is, you know, a very tricky slope. Enforcement is also a topic that has come up. I mean, we have a lot of ordinances that we have adopted as a community over the last several years with the um intent to create a better community for ourselves, to get us on the track of where we want to go. And we've only recently been able to hire a code enforcement officer, for example, and things like our Dark Skies initiatives. And um, you know, other similar ordinances are are going without teeth right now. So adding complexity to our code at a time that we don't understand the full need and the full impact, uh, it sounds very dangerous to me. So that's a, that's a tension in my mind, but I'll just go ahead and state that there's likely a lot of impacts we should consider. Last thing there is um one question that I'd like to know, because I don't know the answer to this, is what could be the impact on long-term rental availability if I had the ability to rent out my room in my home that I lived in full-time as a short-term rental? Because the lack of rentals are, i- is a major issue. Now, there's a huge difference between a apartment or a duplex or a fourplex that has rental units that are independent and me renting out my spare bedroom. I don't rent out my spare bedroom, because I don't want somebody living in it full-time, but I might want the extra money on a Saturday. Like, I totally understand that, but is that a, is it just sort of they are two different markets? Or is there enough overlap between those two markets that we could potentially uh create a gap for an area that we already have a major lack of supply? So I just want to call that out as well, that there's a lot of these sort of moving forces we should be mindful of.
Yeah, and if I could clarify really quickly my statement, and this is, I think, for a separate conversation, more around affordable housing is in the, because I think that there is a strong local argument for, you know, but I have this room that otherwise I wouldn't rent out, and I would really love to be ma- be able to make a little bit of money. And I think what I meant is, I actually think that we might have a potential to create some win-win situations where we have in the form of accessory dwelling units or something similar, dedicated workforce housing, whether deed restricted or some other mechanism, that also provides passive income for the property owner. And that's where my interest lies a little bit more than in trying to turn everybody in Moab into an Airbnb aficionado is to kind of have that win-win where we are providing more workforce housing, but also allowing people to build equity and wealth in their properties and maybe have some passive income. So that's kind of more my meaning with that statement.
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying. And it is tricky, because you can find, it's queen of trade-offs, John, is that what you called me? You can, you can find arguments in either direction. The the last one, I guess I'll add, that I know was a major issue as far as community feedback, when we were looking at just the B and B question alone before we even looked at the moratorium. There are a few bad apple kind of party house B and Bs that are in a couple neighborhoods that really sort of changed the tenor of the broader conversation. But there was a legitimate um concern from people who said, look, you know, during the really busy weekends, I want my neighborhood to be my refuge. I don't want it to be another place where people are driving around. I don't know them, they're staying up late, you know. And so I I do find the tension there, but I I think it's something that is a real community concern. And it's something that um I know remains a real community concern, and that several county commissioners um remain very uh tuned into. So, uh, okay, a couple other comments that I wanted to contribute um related to different use standards. I I fully um the idea of looking at things like distance from the city center in particular is very appealing to me. There is a huge difference between development that is closer to Cisco or Thompson and allowing these smaller communities in our county to define for themselves what they want to adopt uh versus just sort of putting the Moab stamp across all of Grand County. I understand that, and I I think it's very interesting. Obviously, you have less water, you know, general higher cost of utilities. So it would all be um a a different economic conversation in those situations. And I I'd be very intrigued to kind of hear um some of staff's thoughts on that. I also will call out that um related to glamping in particular, this is a a use that has become very controversial. And um I'm not totally sure why, but uh I think there's maybe one or two specific projects that have, just as those party houses sort of flavored the water, um, changed the tenor. I will say there, I know that, you know, with all of the Sittler land that we have around us, Sittler is not beholden to our standards with our our county land use code. But they have in in general sort of abided by them or tried to find a um common ground. Yeah, I know, not not always, uh, but it is something that we've tried to find common ground with. That is one that I would be interested in looking at giving its own designation and overlay, less because I believe that that overlay will be applied in many cases. Um, and I certainly do not think relaxing the standards against campgrounds for them is what I would advocate for. But I would love for us to be able to say, to signal to our public partners, you know, if you were to want a development such as this on your land, this is what we as a community think that, you know, that balances out too. And I think that there is a a good reason to state, I mean, in my opinion, the land use code is both a applicable document, but also a communication tool, and its ability for us to say, this is who we are, this is, this is how we operate as a community, this is why, this is where we're going. And it's a good tool for us to use in partnership with our our public partners. So that is one that I wanted to contribute. I think that sort of covers every, everyone largely spoke to um my comments besides for those two. So I just wanted to contribute that. Let's see, um, recommend me hit the pause button, just recap where we sit. Make sure everybody feels as though, you know, we're all on the same page from the four of us that are here in this conversation. And then what I'd love is to actually give a specific set of next steps to staff. Um, and I'll just add alongside that, um, well, no, I'll come back to the last thing. So do we feel good about this direction? Remote workshops, man, they're fun.
It's great.
Yeah, if I could just jump in there. One of the things that we can do from a staff perspective was glean from the minutes, which Laura is very good at taking, uh, and pull back a number of different categories. One of them obviously is use standards, development standards, use table, how it's used, affordable housing, um mortgage helpers, those costs that are addressed, and start to establish some criteria and and vet the criteria that's currently there, of course, that's part of that, and bring that back to the commission for consideration, and not so much a workshop fashion, but more in a formal commission meeting.
Yeah, um. Sorry, I just remembered one other thing I wanted to say that I'll I'll pivot to. One thing that I am personally tuned into is I don't know what the sentiment is in the county commission as far as adopting these changes and where they would lay some of these priorities out. and where they would lay some of these priorities out. I don't think, given everything we have in front of us as a county, spending considerable staff time and considerable public time on something that the county commission just does not see as in the interest of adopting, of even like taking up or considering. I would be very interested in summarizing and going directly to the county commission first and, and getting a, some direction from them. This is what we did, for example, with the small area plan. We said, look, we're getting a lot of applications in this area. This is where some of us sitting, this is some of the con, the tension and the conversation back and forth. What are the areas that you would like us to lean into and that you would like staff to lean into? Because we've already covered a pretty big area. And obviously owing to staff's expertise as well to guide us and the county commission, but I just will call that out that I don't want to go too far down the road without.
Perhaps a stutter step there could be that we work with Josie and OB because they were both designated by the commission previously to kind of vet this with them. And then if they, if they feel that we should come back to planning commission, maybe that's one of the devices. Or we're seeing how that goes.
That sounds great. The one thing that I wanted to add that I, I'm sorry, I'm going to now interject again. Our standards for expansion. At the time that we were writing and adopting this ordinance. My, my opinion has always been and remains that expansion is a huge opportunity and tool for us. I think it's a way for us to signal where we want things to go. I think it's a way for us to incentivize development that creates community value. That's in the ordinance and we never defined it. We never defined what community value means. And it's, I think, one of the biggest weaknesses of the existing ordinances written. That could be interpreted as, I'm going to add two or three housing units for employees, but there are people I'm actually going to pull in from outside, so it outs, you know, to a net zero. Does that count? We've had people suggest that swimming pools are in the community interest when they would be, be behind a gate and be located far from any families or childrens who might take advantage of it. You know, I am personally, any, any application for an overnight accommodation overlay that comes before us, that will be the number one standard in my head is how do, how, how does this get offset by the value you are bringing to the community? How do you guarantee either jobs or housing or some community amenity that doesn't exist that makes life better for everybody else? And honestly, beyond that being clear, measurable, obvious and, you know, a, a actual confident return. I personally do not necessarily want to entertain any of these expansions because I think there has been too much extracted from community value into the pockets of a few developers. And unfortunately, some bad apples are for everybody else, but I think we need to answer this question as a, as a body and as a county commission. What does community value mean against these developments, developments in particular? That our community is screaming that they are feeling overwhelmed by the tourism sector and by the number of visitors and the impact on their lives. So I will just, that is as assertive as I am going to be to say like, that is the number one thing for me. What does community value mean in our land use code? And how can we then give fairness to developers who want to invest in our community to know what it is that we're looking for, for them to come to the table with?
So Emily, can I just, can I jump in there? I think actually what you're describing to me is much more of a policy area in the general plan and not so much land use code. All of that, we, we could get there. And as you know, we do have, we have one, at least one strong consultant because they actually just submitted an application today. The land use RFP closes on Friday. So we're hopefully going to hit the ground running with some long-range, strong policy references for the types of growth management that the county will buy into.
So I'm just going to go ahead and read from four point six point one. The O A O district should be applied to ensure that new and redeveloped projects result in tangible community benefits through the application of creative design, the incorporation and support for mixed uses, both on-site and elsewhere in the community, and through the provision and support for public uses and spaces to provide a balanced community structure. So we don't include housing in that as a community value. We say tangible benefits, but we don't define how they will be measured. And I don't know that creative design is necessarily the thing that offsets impact. Like we have some creatively designed hotels in our city that are pretty loud. So anyway, I'll leave it there, John. I agree with you. However, I do think that it's something that needs to be kept in partnership with any movement forward on, on this particular area. So that's my opinion. So let me go ahead and just recap what I have heard from staff as far as direction and then make sure everyone's on board. And Laura, with your note taking, I'm sure you will fill in any gaps that I'm missing. Okay, so first of all, there's this question of current state. What is the total number of vested units outstanding? What is the ratio of residential units to overnight accommodations? What is the natural build-out, pace of build-out that we anticipate from those vested units? And is there a natural cap that we can use or natural parameters to set guidance on additional developments such as water use and other resources constraints? And I'm going to go ahead and interject that there may be some natural ratio of accommodation units to residential units or residential units of a specific type even that like when that ratio gets out of line, just the, the cap goes over the pipe. So maybe there's something there. We've asked staff to look into the assured house, just the kind of state of assured housing. This is more of just like a, a pin to, I think it'd be useful to review that one way or another in our next meeting, just to get a sense of that. There is a interest in both quantitative and qualitative ways of distinguishing use versus this sort of large column delineation. So things like quantitative measures, where did I, where did they go? Distance to city center. Value to acreage, which is what, there you go. Return to average size. Shoot, Tony, I wrote that wrong, but I think staff probably captured it. Looking at the size to value.
You nailed it.
On it. Killing it. Also looking at the cost of enforcement of, of, you know, some of these potentially, if there's a way to offset them. And just kind of generally, I think getting an opinion from the county attorney on some of this would be very valuable because getting county attorney in general, as well as from general staff and, and the administrator's office to understand any constraints that they would naturally place that just sort of limit our conversation in a healthy way. Qualitatively, things like is a project more likely to be owned by a local? I've brought in sort of this community value standard. So just making sure that we understand both these quantitative and qualitative measures that would actually be actionable, whether they were part of the general plan work or inserted into some amendment to the ordinance itself. Okay, we've also asked staff to look at this question of workforce housing. It sounds like it's not something that, well, actually, let me just kind of step back. I don't think that we've totally nailed down the question to ask, but there is this sort of like trade-off between is this a use that can lead to other beneficial uses without the negative effect overly impacting that? So is it a, yes, maybe this will allow us to have more people in workforce housing if they have this incentive to develop? Is there a mixed use component? Like we lay out in the ordinance, what does that actually mean? And also just generally looking at like the real cost to development, those trade-offs. Maybe there are some case studies from other communities to help us understand risks to, for example, our long-term rental pool. Okay, I'm going to pause. Those are the big ones that I have noted. Is there anything that I'm missing that we would like staff to specifically come back to us with an opinion and even potentially some drafted language around so we can better move forward?
I'm sorry, I might have missed it because my kids were distracting me. I'm sorry, I'm at home. But did we, are we getting any direction to, or a direction to, to research or maybe define better dude ranch category, clamping? Those kinds of types of uses.
You're right. Thank you. I did bring that up. I, I specifically would be interested in separating clamping as an individual. I'm nonetheless concerned about dude ranches unless we have a specific reason. We think that's when I would say more, I'd be more interested in the quantitative alignment to some of these other uses. But clamping in particular, given the potential and high likelihood for development by our public partners, I'd be very interested in that, some, some creative work around what that could look like. Thank you for calling that out. Josie, Steve, Tony, anything that I am missing from that overall list that we would like to hear back from staff?
I feel square, Emily. Thank you.
I feel pretty good too. I mean, I, I think the term dude ranch is a little off-putting to me and I'm not entirely sure, you know, what it, because I, I feel like it's, it's a little bit more of like a historical relic than a, a use. So I, I do think that one is worth fleshing out. And I can't help but just like think of examples of existing accommodations businesses, possibly in other counties or other states that I feel like kind of fit what would be a beneficial example of something like a dude ranch. And so things that come to mind are things like the ghost ranch in New Mexico, which also has like nonprofit and educational components to it. Like the Boulder Mountain Guest Ranch in Boulder, Utah, which also has kind of a local sustainable agriculture component to it, as well as Hell's Backbone. And so I, I do think that there's a little bit of possibly like anecdotal exploration to be prompted. And maybe that could be part of the public workshop too, because I think sometimes it's helpful, rather than getting lost in the weeds of definitions, to actually just think of examples of, of what people like or feel like have been successful or would be good here.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to say, Josie, thank you for bringing that up because that was one of my thoughts. Is we do have this term dude ranch and I think it really could still be something that's relevant. In terms of, I think way, the way it's defined is it currently is kind of, you know, where you would come out to a, a retreat where you would go hunting. And, and I think that's something that actually is very still relevant and could be a possible use on its own. But then clamping doesn't have anything to do with that. So if, we do need to distinguish, and I think we should bring to the table some, some other kind of category names or use, you know, types that would better define what's actually being proposed and what's actually on the ground today too.
Yeah, it seems like both of those are almost subcategories of something else that we haven't yet defined, which is maybe marked by, you know, being at a greater distance to the town center, maybe having a lot more dedicated open space and some sort of agricultural or other, you know, kind of component. And in having, you know, a degree of sort of self-containment. And those are just kind of me spitballing a little bit, but yeah, it seems like a category that could be fleshed out and that could be a beneficial focus of this county.
I believe that there are numbers that can measure all of that. I think we, if we can do it by numbers, that's, well, it's objective and democratic. And that's what I like most about it. If we're talking about costs and sizes and distances and volumes, it's a much more rock-solid policy. I use that with a lowercase p and land use code or plan. I'm not up to speed on that stuff yet. But it's just better management to do it by numbers.
Area that we need to potentially look at some creative partnership to our, our general code versus just simply our land use code. Because I will just call out that when we are assessing an overlay zone application or even a master plan, you know, we are looking at appropriateness of development to that particular area against our land use code. And we're often not in a position to assess the likelihood of specific sort of micro qualitative elements to the project. But I do think we've seen just from the last couple of years, there are some creative ways that we can partner business license use to land use and look at ways that we can actually get to the outcomes that the community, including our development community is looking for. So plus one to that, Tony. Sorry, Josie, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I mean, I think numbers can even, because I, what I would counter to Tony is I think numbers plus values, which is kind of going back to what you said, Emily, is, you know, really fleshing out that community value and what those are specifically. And, you know, how many or all of them that might be, you know, required for each new development. And I think those two together and some of those values can also be defined a little bit by, by numbers as well. You know, things like environmental markers and open space, you know.
Sustainable design.
Yeah, I mean, those can be very quantitative as well, but I think it's important that we kind of keep them under the umbrella of some of these community values as well.
Going to interject because it came up in the comments. I do just want to clarify because I didn't know earlier that dude ranches and destination resorts are currently permitted in the O A O hotel motel districts. All dude ranches or destination resorts shall comply with the standards of that section. So there was some question to that, separate from the land use code and then in the comments as well in the chat. So hotels, motels, dude ranch.
Thank you. I finally caught up. Just kidding. Just to, you know, I think what, you know, your synopsis and recap there, I think, yeah, I don't, I don't really have anything else to add other than one thing, it's just, it's on this topic, but I know it's different in scope. Just looking at the, so I just kind of just throw this in as a plug. I would love if we could bolster some of the requirements of development as, as it pertains to water and just, you know, making that more robust. Because that, that is just my big worry when we have all of this overnight accommodation. And obviously a lot of these, you know, they're already grandfathered in and these regulations don't apply to them. It just worries me that we have so many people that don't understand that, you know, water is scarce here. And how long are their showers? You're changing linens every day. It's just a ton of water usage. And I just wonder if we couldn't, you know, focus on that a little bit more, bolster that up. And then I just think, how can we incentivize the, the current usage to, to just do better as well? Because I think, you know, we've had this, we've had this ordinance in place and we've had, what, what was it? One application that we, and we turned down. You know, so how mu, how many more possible developers are going to come through and try to use this? I mean, have, I, I just, seeing that we've had one come through in the couple of years that this has been around, you know, or since the moratorium ended, it's like, well, that's interesting. I start to switch gears into, well, we need to do something about our water usage. And so maybe that's incentivizing, you know, what has already been created. So I'm just throwing that out there. Maybe that's a, a future considerations thing and I'm speaking out of turn here. But while we're, while I have the land use code open to this ordinance, I thought I'd bring that up.
I don't think you're speaking out of turn. I think that there is an interesting question that one of our citizens to be heard commented on, which is just like talking about water use by overnight accommodations can conflate the impact of different uses. And it is interesting that some of these, minus the, the B and B question, these uses we've generally been talking about would likely be located in places where, you know, quite frankly, water hookups wouldn't even be feasible or available. And so it would have to require some sort of pump or pre-existing well, in which case you'd have the water rights anyway vested. So I do think that it's an interesting question. And then Josie raised as well, like, is there a natural cap against water that we could develop? And the last thing we want to do is, is, and I, I don't know that this would necessarily happen, but see a large influx of interest in developments that somehow made it more difficult to to have residential development or, or commercial development that benefited locals. So Steve, I don't think you're wrong. And, and that goes back to these questions around expansion standards. So while most of the larger hotels and motels in town, which is the sort of the big woozy, are in the city itself, we have a few large developments out on the river road, as well as in southern part of the county. And the one that really I'm, I'm focused on is turf grass. And I have read, so anecdotal, that turf grass is often the larger, largest impact of, of these types of development that with the technology of, for example, waste systems, you know, it's, it's not that much different than residential development at the scale that we're seeing new developments come online. But I would be curious and looking into expansion and redevelopment standards as it pertains to not just water use, but requirements of zeric planting. I sent an email to staff a couple of weeks ago to see, is there any interest or feasibility to require? We already have this written in of like eighty percent sustainable energy offset, but even just to go all the way up to one hundred, like can we require solar for any development above a specific size in these particular categories? So it wouldn't impact those low impact, smaller, less costly developments. But if we did have some development come online or expansion that we would be able to put in some more tight standards. We also haven't answered the question of if I want to redevelop, is there any portion of my existing project that's caught under these new development standards or is it only the net new one? That's a, that's a big, big question that we don't have an answer to. I know what I would like the answer to, but actually I'm going to add that to the list of directives for staff because I, I don't see a world where we don't try to capture some percentage of the existing footprint of energy and water use in particular without, you know, when looking at every development.
Yeah. And I might add, if there's, if there's a scarcity of new development to be had because we have certain caps in place, you know, that redevelopment might be incentivized just through scarcity of, of. You know, redoing everything in its entirety to current standards. And I, I mean, I would personally love to shoot for the moon for that if it seems like it could play out on the ground. Just with all of those factors going in. Um, and to piggyback on what you said, Emily, I think in addition to water wise. Standards moving forward, I, I'm also keen to think about what is also, um, like net cooling. Uh, just for heat and climate change and, you know, because I'm aware that turf grass is cool. Like you, you know, you're on someone's lawn. I mean, I go up the street to the Mormon church and it is so much cooler there than it is at my house because it's all lawn. And I'm not saying that we should keep all this turf grass, but I'm thinking there, there has to be an alternative that is not only water wise. Um, but also has the same effect of having a net cooling. Uh, in our, in our town so that we're also, uh, you know, creating a, a livability and I'd be interested in what that looks like as well in terms of revisiting some of those standards.
So staff, little bit of homework. We've given you a long list. Sorry, Steve, let's just do one last round table. And then I'd, I'd love to do is just start to wrap this conversation up and make sure we're aligned on next steps. Does that sound good? Cool. All right. Go ahead, Steve.
Oh, I was just gonna give an update. I was trying to hunt down maybe just a little bit of information on what water's looking like. Um, I know you and I had talked about this. I reached out to, to Dana at Quisza and, uh, really no update, you know, there were, uh, Grand County Quisza is working with. Uh, the San Juan Special Service District to, to try to get, uh, you know, sustainable water management. Um, plan for the next hundred years. And they're just like, yep, we're, we're still just working on it. And so I just know that we've, we've had many discussions within this, this, um. Um, commission of, well, what's our water? And we're, you know, same old, still, still waiting. And so. Just throwing that out there as that was relevant.
Thank you. All right, Tony and Josie, any last thoughts on this topic before we move forward? Great. Um, so John and Lisa, I know that we just fired a whole bunch of darts your way. Um, you know, with everything you have on your plate, do you need any further refinement of prioritization amongst these questions? Or any questions answered from us to make sure that you have what you need to go forward?
Go, really?
I think I'm okay, John. Do you have anything?
No, I think it's just process. I think we've got a lot of data here. It's very good, good workshop, I thought. Um, sustainability and if I could just tap some of this off, he is, he's got three, three legs in the stool, right? Primarily equity or social is one of the legs. Uh, you don't do quantification without that part, uh, as far as impacts are concerned. I mean, your comment, Tony's a good one because it's good to have numbers that you look at. But if you don't do this offside, you really are in peril in a lot of cases. So. I think that about that valuation really is a, the, the statements you read, Emily, in the land use code. Around O A Os is really more, much more of a general plan statement than this land use post. And those things belong in the land use code. That's one of the analysis we're going to be doing is taking a look at. O A Os, H D H Os, those incentives that are in development standards in, in current new land use code and translating those into general plan. So that's coming. Uh, so even though what you've identified is a bunch of really great, I think, discussion topic areas, we need to think about how we can bring this to the commission in a cohesive fashion. And so to get from here to there, I think is one of those steps. Uh, we can work with Josie on if you're okay with that and Obi and Lisa might want to comment on this too, I don't know. Uh, and then kind of shoot for something in October. I don't think we're gonna get this back to the, to the county commission. Anytime soon. I'm gone next week. And I'm thinking we probably come back with some type of, uh, advice to Josie and Obi around timing.
That was, Josie, would you and Obi keep me, um, looped in or add me optional to those follow ups just to kind of keep a pulse on it? Don't use me as a blocker or anything to moving forward, but if you could just kind of keep, you know, with that'd be great. Okay. Um, also just comment on that. I think Kevin Walker on the commission initiative, in addition to Commissioner Hadeen is a good person to stay tightly aligned to with this particular topic because he has the context of being. A planning commissioner at the time that we adopted this. So, um, I, I'd highly recommend, uh, a pulse check from him as well on some of these questions. Cool. We're gonna move on to future considerations and the flat grant public meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so there's the agenda in front of you. Uh, you're all invited. Of course you can't all be there, otherwise it's an open meeting. So only three of you can be. And although it's hybrid too, so then we have to be careful who's online and who's not online. So I don't know, we just have to cut people off if there's four. This applies to the county commission too, of course. So Mary's going to be introducing the topic, talking about it. It is a county initiative. Uh, it does have, it does wrap in and a couple of other things as far as private developments concerned that might overhang some of this, but. Our goal is to minimize that as much as possible and take a look at development standards, design standards. We were hoping to get a, we're hoping this is still coming. A drone flyover that'll actually take a look at the area and what it looks like. And then, uh, we were gonna run a synchro model on the. Uh, the full build out and what the traffic impact assessment is looking like, but we can't get that model run because the T I A was actually done. On 1500 units rather than 500. So it's a little skewed. So we did want to show data that was false. So it'll be a good, should be a good public session. It's gonna be in the grand center and hopefully we can set up the hybrid model. It seems to be working fairly well and hopefully we can get on Zoom. I don't know if we want to record it. We might want to do that same thing.
I, I definitely record it. Um, I, I am planning on attending, uh, unless there is significant interest in the body that would grant us quorum. Is there any one of the four here? Three remaining here that is very eager to attend or planning to attend?
Um, I was thinking about attending. I'm also, uh, it might be helpful to me to be able to attend in the hybrid fashion. Uh, as opposed to in person and I'm also okay, especially if it's being recorded and catching up afterwards if other people want to. Kind of see there.
John or, oh, go ahead, Tony, sorry.
Oh, I was, I thought it was a good time. Um, just as an order of business. Uh, I write letters of support for county flat projects in a state capacity. And so just to be covering all our bases, I wanted to say for the record that I'm gonna recuse myself from any flat business on this side. Of the discussion because I don't want to get the wires crossed.
Thank you for that. I don't know that you would need to formally recuse yourself because you don't have a personal vested interest. So please feel free to continue. To listen in during those meetings, but I appreciate also, uh, the sensitivity. Um, so John or Lisa, would you mind just sending an email to the, to the larger body? Just with this question of who is planning to attend, let's just get a sense of how much actual interest there is in attending, just so we avoid a quorum and then we'll go from there. But I would love if you would record it just. Thank you. Uh, any other future considerations?
Nothing at this point, I don't think. You're Lisa?
Um. I don't think we have anything really to report on in terms of, we're, I think at the next meeting, we'll be able to. Kind of update you on like what's coming up for D R T and like new applications, but I think we're. We're not quite there yet.
I know in a past meeting, we had asked about the, an update on the Sitla land next to the university. And if we had any update to that project, um, I don't know if that's something that you've had a chance to. Look into or have any information around, but I'd love to just stay close to understanding that development, the one to the, I guess, the north. Right adjacent.
Um, it's on Sitla land? I don't have the information on that. I'm sorry. I, I will go back in. The minutes and, and we can look at that again, unless you're talking about the. There was a proposal for.
No, this is, this is really the Sitla man, I think, and the city's interest in developing that with the university. Which, which is really more of a city oriented thing. And it's for, last I heard from Nora, and we can check with her again. Is nothing had been developed, but you never know what's going on to the table, you know, that's under the table, but sometimes they're below the radar. So we could check in for sure.
I think, you know, part of the reason for asking is just there's, things are happening so fast and that was a very, very large proposed project that largely catered to out of town residents that could have a pretty big shock to our, potentially a pretty big shock to our housing market. So. Maybe that one under the future housing workshop conversation and just make sure that we, we look at that. Along the other.
Definitely. Okay, I'm, I will look into that for sure, Emily.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. I know I keep putting things on the desk, but I think that's it for me. Anything else that we need to cover before we have a motion to adjourn?
Hey, I just want to say thank you to the planning department. This is great having you all here and you're like feeling settled in. Um, yeah. I love the, the direction and it's great having you all here.
Well, I really appreciate all of you and all of the intelligent discussion. It's just, it's really awesome. And I, and I love that we can. Sit here for two hours and. Have that, that kind of level of discussion. It's great. And it's very helpful for us as staff.
Wonderful. And we sort of, uh, left it without fanfare, but welcome Tony as well, our newest member of the planning commission. So we, we will start at the end.
Welcome, Tony.
All right.
I'll be.
With these happy notes in the State of the Union, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor? You know, miss. Thanks, everyone. Have a great.